Okay. I'll call this January 28, 2025 meeting of council order at 4:30 PM. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council, staff and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being live streamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with Municipal Freedom of Information and Privacy, Protection of Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone was attending in person and if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of the meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So at this time, I'd ask everyone to rise for the national name. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Honegoshani, Mississauga and Omaunawinnee people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all indigenous people, including the Manti, Inuit and other First Nations from across this vast land who also make this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Tuero-Wampum, Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27 and the Crawford Purchase. That, we have confirmation of the agenda and now we do have change in the agenda. I'll speak to it, just turn it over to the clerk.
Yes, good afternoon, council. I would like to ask for an amendment to the open session agenda to include an item from Corporate Services, Strategy and Innovation Department regarding the use of approved funding for initial program items as 11.4 and then subsequently removing the recommendation under 6.1 where it talks about the funding agreement.
Thank you. So in that case, we would be, the recommendation would be that the agenda of the January 28, 2025 meeting of council be confirmed as amended. Councilor Proderick so moved, seconded by Councilor Willis. All in favor, motion has passed. Any declaration of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof for open session? Seeing none. Now we would, I would take a motion to go into closed session if someone would move that and read the motion please. Councilor Willis.
I move that council move into closed session to consider labor relations or employee negotiations, HR policies which may impact future labor relations negotiations pursuant to Section 239.2 H and D of the Municipal Act.
So moved, seconded by Deputy Mayor Towne. All in favor, motion has passed. We will go into closed.
Welcome, everyone. We'll reconvene the council meeting. We started our, our meeting actually at four thirty and we've been in closed session. Coming out into open session now at six o'clock. So I'll rise and report that in closed session, we received HR policies which may impact the future labor relation negotiations. And we did have one report. I'd turn to councillor Budrick.
I declared pecuniary interest in, in the, in the one item that we discussed that the mayor spoke of.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll just mention that councillor Parks has sent her regrets for this evening, so she will not be attending. We have no presentations or statutory meetings. Open forum. So fifteen minutes of the meeting has been set aside for open forum. Any individual may address council regarding an item on the agenda excluding matters under the statutory public meeting section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak can register in advance with the clerks division or use a raised hand feature if participating virtually. In Zoom. Today, we have no pre-registered speakers. So I will start within chambers and then I will go to the virtual audience to see if anyone wishes to speak. So in chambers, so just confirm, is there any, anyone in chambers that wishes to present anything to council this evening under open forum? If none, we will go to the virtual audience. If you're in the virtual audience and you wish to speak to council, please use the raised hand feature and we can bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. So that completes open forum. So we're on to delegations and we have. There we go. Just bringing them in now to talk, Tracy, to talk about the municipal and utility access for relations specialist at Explorer. To address council regarding the rollout of the Amherst Island project. Wait for him to come in the audience. You're muted. We can't hear you in chambers.
Okay.
There we go. That's, that's perfect. Thank you so much for attending this evening and as requested by council, attending to provide some, an overview of this proposed project on Amherst Island. So whenever you're ready, you can please proceed.
Sounds good. I'll just share my screen now. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So this is more or less an overview on the ACIP project. So let me introduce myself first. So I'm Tracy Schell, who I'm with our municipal relations department. I typically do presentations like this to municipalities where we're doing work. We're currently doing about one hundred and fifty-five municipalities within rural Ontario for the purposes of the ACIP project. Explorer was one of the eight proponents that was awarded work on this project. And we, we have a good portion of the project, about twenty percent, I think, looking to connect about seventy-five thousand homes. I think on the government website, it says fifty-nine thousand, but there's a number of go-to-lone homes we're going to connect as well. So that number's around seventy-five. So I think this presentation will talk about the importance of fiber and I'm just going to sort of go through it rather quickly and then get to the, the part of the island that we're talking about and the ASAP homes that were selected by the province for us to connect. But our first slide really talks about the accelerated high-speed internet program as presented by the province. They provided funding of four billion dollars to bring access to reliable high-speed internet. So what that looks like from our perspective is we will build this project using our own money, our portion of it, and the province will reimburse us once we've met criteria that they have, which is to be on time and on budget by December of this year. So we're kind of on the clock with every portion of this build, including Loyalist, Amherst Island specifically, right around. Yeah, the small town that I've forgotten the name of, sorry. So the, the idea behind this project was to connect every community. And so I think during COVID, what happened was it was noted that there was a lot of outages and light times and, and, and internet service providers going down. It was just too much demand, people working from home, and it didn't work. So problems came up with the initiative to connect the most rural parts of these communities. And so typically, so rural that it doesn't make business sense for a company or an ISP like Explorer, Rogers, or Bell to go and spend twenty thousand dollars to go down a road to go up three homes. And so that is the whole purpose behind this project, to make it feasible from a business perspective to go and connect those homes. They passed Ontario Connected Act in two thousand and twenty-two to help facilitate the, the quick build of this project. This next slide basically talks about some of the things that, that we will provide as a, as an ISP in this area. It's things that we, I think we all kind of know, you know, we all know what accelerated high-speed internet is. We, we know what the rural connections are and we know that there are a bunch on Aimhurst Island and in Stella looking for this. It's gonna be an improved broadband experience. Lots of packages you can choose from. We have a Canadian-based customer support system and we want to connect every community. This next slide talks about, you know, the benefits of, of internet and I would just add high-speed internet to this. So we're, we're looking at basic fifty-ten service. So that looks like about a hundred megabits per second in, in these communities based on a hard-wired fiber connection. But I won't go into each of them. I want to leave some time for questions. You know, this is more about us as a company and we do go out of our way to put the customers first. Our customer rating in, in Canada is quite high right now. It's gone up again in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. And that's all available online. I won't go into each bullet point. I wanted to get to the island of Aimhurst, Aimhurst Island. And, and this first slide shows you the fiber routes. So the pink and red running lines are the, are the fiber lines that we're looking to build. Up here is Stella. We've got a tower going in here that's been approved by council. It's been signed. We, we have a signed lease back. That tower will go up. And instead of trying to trench a line under the water, we have a tower that will create that same connection. These little green dots show the ASAP eligible homes, but a better slide for that would be this one. These green dots are all ASAP eligible homes that were identified by the province. And so our goal is to connect these. The go-to-lone homes that I was talking about earlier are these in red. So that's homes that we decide that we'd like to, you know, possibly bring five or two in an effort to get more business. They may already have service. It's gonna be up to them. So the, the money spent to connect these homes will be, will be our money and there will be no subsidy applied to these homes. So to talk more specifically though about Stella, we've had issues with trying to find a solution to be able to run fiber on a specific street that, that we can't find a way to do. So there are Hydro One poles in the area. There are Bell poles in the area. We've applied to both to get onto their poles. There's too much make-ready work required for Hydro One and the Bell poles can't accommodate us. So we're left with going underground, which we can't do because of the rock. And so now we have a real problem. So this island in, in general is, and that street, which is kind of like the lynch point, it connects, you know, this road and this road and this road eventually. It means that we don't have a solution. So we have worked with the engineering and planning department. We've spoken to the CIO and her team and as well the roads, Public Works Department to try and find a way, but we're still back at the point where we don't have a solution as to how to build on that street. There's capital works planned for that street. And those capital works have been pushed out from the first five years. Now it's, it's after five years that the town is looking to do that work. But we're just, I guess, wanted an opportunity to let you know how important that little portion of the build is. It's just one street, but it does provide us connectivity with the rest of the island. So we, we're looking for an opportunity to maybe share what our challenges are. And if there are any suggestions for, for getting to a point where we can do something, that would be great. Open for questions.
Okay. Thank you for providing that presentation. If you wouldn't mind stopping sharing your screen, then we would be able to. Yes, you'll be back. You will be back on the screen. There we go. Council, any questions or comments for the presenter this evening? Councillor Prodrig.
Thank you worshiping through you. Just a question. Can you explain to me, I, I don't know if I got this or not, but you say some homes, going-alone homes you refer to in your one map and, and it sounds like some get subsidies and some don't. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, so the government undertook an initiative to find out which homes in rural Ontario don't have basic high speed, which is fifty-ten service. They have identified for us which are the homes that don't, and they've given, given us a map identifying the homes. And so our engineers go out and design this project to try and run fiber down streets, run poles to get to these ASAP eligible homes. Now the go-to-lone homes, as it kind of, you know, describes, those are homes that, that we will spend our own money to build the connection from our main trunk to their homes with the, the hopes that we'll get a customer out of that one day. So that's what go-to-alone means.
Just so I'm clear. So that, in effect, what, yeah, you're doing the same thing maybe that happened in Amherst a few years back with Bell Five. They, they bury all the cables, they hook it up to the house, but you don't have to buy it, but the hope is you will eventually take advantage of it. Is that?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Willis, did I see your hand up previously?
Yes, thank you. Through, Your Honor. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm actually the councillor that represents Board One, Amherst Island. I'm not quite, just following up on councillor Prodrig's question, the, the ASAP eligible and go-it-alone homes. How, how were those determined? Do you, do you know?
Yeah, the ASAP eligible homes were determined by the province. The go-it-alone homes were determined by us. So the ASAP eligible homes does not include every homeowner on the island. Only ones that they've identified as not having basic high-speed internet.
Okay, thank you. And a follow-up on that. I noticed just looking at the map, there's a, there are a couple of homes that have probably been built since the time that both of those maps were done. What would those homeowners do if they wanted to be included in the project? One is on a straight, a section of road that's not identified at all, at all as having a line.
That is a very good question. I would have to find out from you at, at a later date, the exact location of those homes. And I can forward that to the business group that will have to make a, a case analysis as to, you know, are those homes close to the fiber that's going to be installed? If not, what is the cost to go from where the fiber is to where the home is? And if it's within the, the cost range that is acceptable, I guess, in similar terms, like can we eventually make money on that? Then that'll be a determining factor. But if, if you can share with me later on where these homes are, I'm happy to carry that forward to the business group.
I will. Thank you. You mentioned the street that's problematic in the village of Stella. Are you talking about Front Road, the main, the main street?
That is a very good question. I'm just gonna refer to an email that I got from one of my colleagues who's the PM on the project for that stretch. Stella Village, Proz underground, blah, blah, blah. She does not name the street and I'm just. It probably is Front Road. I'm guessing because it's gonna be a main street where our main fiber backbone infrastructure is gonna run down. So it sounds like that would be the case, but I can, I can confirm that and get back to you.
Thank you. One more through the chair. So the questions that are being asked by the, the people that live on the island who are very excited about having access to this, this service. But the questions that are being asked is, is really what the construction is going to look like? Will there be trenching? Are you piggybacking on the poles that are existing or will new poles be put up? So, so could you kind of give us an idea of what the actual construction is gonna look like?
Yeah, so that, that's a standard response from us. It's always going to include the construction methods that all ISPs use. I think the number one method is plowing. We'd like to plow in next to the road. It's typically the, the space that's available, but in this particular case, it's not because of rock. The next construction method we, we use is new poles. So we can use our own new poles. We can get on to Hydro One pole and get out to Bell poles. We work with all of the LDCs within rural Ontario through agreements called joint use agreements where we can take up the communication space on those poles. And so it's gonna be a combination of those and we leave it up to our engineers that we contract this work out to, to design that. And yeah, in, in this particular case, it's limited based on the amount of space that's in the right of way. And the fact that the, the street's being widened at some point as a result, neither Hydro One or Bell are gonna, you know, allow us to engage them to do make-ready work. Make-ready work is they have to replace the pole because the pole's too old to allow for a company like ours, an ISP, to take up space to overlash in the communication space.
Thank you. Any other questions? At this time from council? Yes, turn to the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, there's a question in the, coming from the, the attendees. Is it okay if I ask Tracy to answer those questions? It's usually not permitted, but given that Tracy's here.
Do we need to waive anything on the procedure? Or am I allowed to do this?
It would be up to the chair to provide that indulgence.
I can ask the question. Councillor Willis has another question, so we'll let her go first.
Thank you. Through the chair. I'm curious about the difference. I'm curious about the difference between the current L T E connections that that Explorer has to the island and what this trunk connection through the tower to the mainland will be. I think just a concern that broadband is broadband and it'll be the same level of service. So perhaps if the speaker could talk to that.
Sure. The the fiber connection will be a much faster connection and more consistent and reliable connection without any lag time. Now, to speak about it from a technical standpoint, I can give you the kind of like the Kohl's notes, which is what I'm trying to do. But there's probably a better technical explanation for that, which I don't have the answer to, but I'm happy to get that. But for sure, it'll be a much better connection or we would not be undertaking this entire process. So the signal coming to the tower on the island will be so strong, it will power all the fiber going to all the homes. And they'll get a hundred megabits per second consistently.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no further questions at this time, we would enter entertain a motion to receive. Moved by Deputy Mayor Townen, seconded by Counsel Willis. Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Saying none, call the question on favor. Motion is passed. Thank you for attending this evening and providing this information on the proposed project and look forward to further discussions with staff as we finalize, see if we can finalize this work. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for the invite.
Items for consideration. And I just lost my additional budget request for the Odessa West Recreation Reconstruction Project. And welcome. Is there anything in addition that you have to share this evening or just here for questions?
Nothing further worship, just here for questions.
Okay. Counsel, we do have the report in front of us. There is a recommendation. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor so we can have a discussion? Counsel Prodrick. Yeah, if you could read the recommendation.
Recommended the report from the Engineering and Environment Division, additional budget request, Odessa West Reconstruction Project dated January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five received and that council approved additional funding for Odessa West Reconstruction C C one seven zero zero two three and Emma Street Servicing Allowance C C two ten zero one seven of two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in the general capital reserve as available with the balance to be funded from new debt financing and up to two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the water rate reserve and fifty five thousand from the sewer rate reserve.
So move. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Ennis. Mover, any comments, questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Through your worship. Can I refer you to the chart on page five? And if I, so as I read that chart, I'm reading down column A budget. So that's the budget, five million, one hundred and twelve thousand. All those things added up. So when I go to the second column B committed funds, so that's what's been spent to this point. That the way I read that?
Through your worship, not necessarily spent, but contracts have been signed. So there is a commitment there.
Okay. And then and so on. So I guess my my question is I look at that. If I read across now, planning and design ninety seven thousand, five hundred, then a hundred and seventy four thousand, three sixty two. Is that telling me that there was seventy seven thousand dollars more in planning and design than originally budgeted for? That's the way I read it. I don't know if I'm reading it right or wrong.
That's correct.
Okay. And if I can continue, when when a budgeted project is laid out and so on, what kind of reserve do you have in terms of percentage? Like would you hold back budget in for like ten percent overrides or over costs or is that in the factor there somewhere?
Yeah, so through your worship, typically we carry ten to fifteen percent contingency on the construction contract costs. So that would be reflected within the total gross budget. We don't necessarily continue, carry a contingency on in every line item.
Okay, so in this project, then in effect, if my math is correct, you are more that the project, not you, sorry, is twenty percent over cost already? Does that sound right? Is my math right on that?
The the variance, the additional budget that we're requesting is about ten percent of the total approved budget to date. So we're, I would state we're ten percent over budget.
Okay, not fair enough. I'm just looking at the, I guess, the over the over costs, et cetera. Okay, thank you.
Seconder, any comments or questions? Any others? Counsel Willis. And then I'll come to you.
Thank you through chair. You mentioned that one of the reasons for the planning and design cost overrun is unanticipated utility relocations due to improperly marked field locates for the gas mains. Were those field locates done by someone outside of Loyalist Township? Was it the?
Yes, through your worship, that's correct. We would have gone through the one call system.
And they marked the gas lines improperly and that, did that lead to the gas leak that we experienced?
No, through your worship, the gas leak was on a separate project from this one. The improperly marked locates led to a conflict with some of our other buried infrastructure that we were planning. So additional gas relocations occurred, which increased the cost of this project.
And do we have any way to go back to one call and recover some of those those funds that are their fault?
Not that I'm aware of. Our franchise agreement with Embridge states that any relocations that need to occur within the right of way, the township is responsible for paying thirty percent of the costs. Which is where those numbers have come from.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Budry.
Through the chair, quick question, the change orders, is that because of the change in locations? I was just curious if you've got a few different things for shortfalls, but I was just seeing that there's in that item, the change orders, that's a good chunk. That's almost your ten percent. That's all. That's just a little explanation on that. That's all.
Yep, through your worship, there's going to be a number of items that would factor into the change orders. So one thing I would state is because this is a unit rate cost contract, all the additional work is at the tendered rates. So there's no additional profit markup, things like that. It's all at the competitively bid tender rates. The bulk of that I will describe as the additional work on West Street. During the work when we were doing, we had not intended to reconstruct that portion of West Street between Maine and South. But because of the difficulties we ran into with the series A water main pipe, it was determined that that work had to proceed.
And any other questions? I'll go back to Counsel Willis.
Thank you through the chair. There is a note in this that the Emma Street servicing portion of the project will be coming out of local improvement charges. So do we know the the net impact? So we're ten percent off on the cost of the project, but some of that is going to come back through the local improvement charges. Am I correct?
Through your worship. It would be a small proportional amount that would be factored in from the Emma Street as compared to the overall cost overrun. All those costs will be calculated in accordance with the act, but primarily the difficulties we ran into were not on Emma Street.
Okay. And I guess my final question then is we, it speaks of the balance that we need is coming out of the general capital reserve and it didn't really specify how much money is in that reserve and what will be debt. So we don't really know exactly the amount of money that we're approving the debt for. Do you have those numbers or does the treasurer?
So in discussion and Shelley could correct me if I'm wrong, but in discussion with the treasurer, anything coming out of general rate at this point will be debt financed. There's this cannot come out of reserve. The reserves is for water and sewer. There's the sufficient funds in the reserve to cover the the additional cost.
Yes, Director Merritt is correct. There is no money at this point in time from the reserves. We're trying to finalize and close out some projects. So there's possibility that there could be some money in the reserve, but at this point in time, it's all debt financed. And then we'll be bringing a report back to council that's going to show exactly what those amounts are in the future. So it's just the township portion that is the debt, not as Director Merritt indicated, the water and sewers from reserves.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Back to the mover for final. Do you have any final comments?
After your worship, I'm still, I'm still confused about that. Two sixty five from general capital reserve. So we don't have it right now, but if other projects come in below, we're going to have some. And that will be the first place for money comes out before we hit the other two reserves. Is that
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. Fleet condition and needs study. Just wait for change in staff? Welcome. Do you have anything additional to share or just here to answer questions?
Just for questions, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, counsel. We do have the report with recommendation. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor so we can deal with this? Deputy Mayor.
I move that the report from the Public Works Division dated January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, re fleet condition and needs study be received. Two, the council directs staff to engage a consultant to complete a fleet condition and need study. And three, the council approve that this project be funded up to twenty five thousand dollars from the fleet and equipment reserve fund.
So moved. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Budry. Mover, any comments?
Only that I think this is, this is timely and good to do. I mean, having just gone through budget processes, a lot of what the public sees are the fleet that we have on the road and there's always comments about that. And I think this will serve us to have to to, you know, have a strategic approach to our fleet, so.
Thank you. Seconder? Other members, any questions or comments? Counsel Prodrick.
Yeah, if I can just ask one question through your worship. Can you, is this going to be a one off or how does this fit, I guess, with the asset management plan over the years in terms of the fleet?
Through your worship. This will help us develop. It'll be a look at what's happening right now. It'll feed into the asset management plan, but as part of it, it'll be recommending different strategies for replacement and we'll incorporate that into the asset management plan and how we move forward.
So if I may follow up, just so in effect, it's going to give us a strategy maybe for X number of years. It won't be looked at every year through this process.
Every year through your worship, every year when we're looking at the replacement, we'll be reviewing this as a guiding principle.
Yeah, you won't.
We won't do this study every year.
Yeah, so you won't have to go to consultants every year.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, if I might add, the one piece here is, you know, we do have the pilot leasing program that we're currently utilizing. And one of the key pieces here is which direction we we're going to be going. We're going to continue that. Are we going to, you know, we want to make sure that we're utilizing the best strategies out there to manage the fleet and the most efficiently. So that's a key piece for me that I want to to have reviewed and and some recommendations on that piece.
Other members, any questions or comments? Just before going back to the mover, I would somewhat echo the mover in that I'm glad to see this coming forward. We have looked at different strategies. We've tried some. And now it's a good time to find out what's working and what's not and what we should, where we should go in the future. I think it's very prudent planning. So thank you for bringing this forward. With that, back to the mover for final. Nothing, call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Okay, miscellaneous fees and charges by law date. Did you have anything additional? No? Okay. So counsel, we have the recommendation before us. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Deputy Mayor.
I move that the report from the Heritage Culture and Tourism Division dated January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, re miscellaneous fees and charges by law update be received. And the two, that the fees for the Heritage Culture and Tourism Division's attractions, events and services as considered in the twenty twenty five operating budget be implemented as presented. And three, that bylaw twenty twenty five dash zero four, a bylaw to amend, bylaw twenty twenty two dash zero zero six, the miscellaneous fees and charges by law be enacted and passed.
Does it move? Do we have a seconder? Counsel Willis. Mover? Any comments? Seconder? Yes, please.
Just a question through your worship. We're talking about adding fees for some of our attractions like Fairfield Gut Site and and the Bath Museum. The amounts that they're projected to raise are not huge. What are the logistics of implementing these fees? And I guess my question is, is it worth it to get three dollars per person to visit these sites with the background that you're going to have to do to set this in place?
Through your worship, this is just the the introduction of getting the process in place. As the, you know, as we come up with our master plan and some of the guidance and that's coming through that, we anticipate that this will grow. So it is worth it. It also gives us an avenue that right now, we currently don't have anything where we can charge for these things. So this gives us an avenue as well for the gift shop for different things that that we want to. So yes, it is it is definitely beneficial.
Through your worship, just on the same vein, I guess, and is the introduction of admissions going to decrease participation? You know, and I know that's not something you can give me a hundred percent answer, but is that something you would look at next year and say, you know, we did this and you know, we went down fifty percent in visitors because I know myself, it's a nice Sunday afternoon just to walk down Bath and go through the different things. And that would be my worry that the numbers participating will go down. Any comment or?
Through your worship, yes, we will be monitoring it closely to see to see the impacts. Our our hope is that it it won't be impacted that much and that's partially why we're trying to keep it minimal as well.
And I, through your worship, just the last one, I think obviously the Bath Canada Day thing is a is a pretty big compared to the other ones cost enhancement, I guess. How does it compare to, do you know how it compares to, let's say, other centers that do maybe a similar event? And in terms of what they pay for their booth and and any kind of rental and that, Steve, do you have any idea on that or?
Through your worship, I don't right at this moment, but I'd be happy to provide some comparisons for you.
Any other members of council have comments? Seeing none, back to the mover for final. Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. And now we will go to eleven point four. Use of approved funding for initial program items and as staff come forward, I will just make a bit of a statement here, which will be provide some understanding, I think, of why this change happened. The Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation, C M H C, has announced an agreement with Loyalist Township to accelerate the construction of a hundred and sixty five housing units over the next three years through the Housing Accelerator Fund. Through this agreement, the federal government will provide three point five eight million dollars to Loyalist Township to eliminate barriers to building the housing we need faster. Loyalist Township's action plan commits to eight local initiatives that will help increase different housing types and density. This includes increased support for affordable This includes increased support for affordable and purpose-built renting hu- rental housing, reduced timelines for development approvals, donation of municipally-owned land available for housing and implementation as of right, policies for more forms and mixed use of housing. On behalf of council and our community, I would like to express my sincere gratitude of being selected to receive federal funding through the Government of Canada's Housing Accelerator Fund. This funding, along with partnerships with the County of Lennox and Addington, the development community and our residents, will allow us to take meaningful steps towards increasing the supply of safe and affordable housing in Loyalist Township. So with that, I will turn it over to staff. Do you have anything additional to share?
Thank you, your worship. Um, if I may, I may just provide a bit more of a summary of how we got to where we are right now and um, a summary of the report uh, that, that was intended to be uh, received by council in closed session this evening. So um, the report that's in front of council currently was originally intended to be considered in camera as this funding had to remain confidential until a formal announcement could be made. Today, township staff became aware that yesterday, CMHC made public the list of Housing Accelerator Fund recipients within the province of Ontario. And as such, we're pleased that this discussion around the critical path items associated with the township's half-action plan can happen publicly this evening. Uh, this funding will be granted over three years to support Loyalist Township's half-action plan, which includes eight initiatives, as noted by the mayor. And uh, for the benefit of any members of the public listening, I'll just list what those eight initiatives are. So they are uh, zoning bylaw comprehensive review, reducing commenting timelines for planning applications, design guidelines clarity through streamlining and consolidation of planning and engineering requirements, development policy review and implementation, declaration and sale of surplus land for housing or housing supportive uses, implementation of an affordable and purpose-built rental housing community improvement plan, affordable housing grant and land donation to Lennox and Addington County for the purpose of construction of affordable housing, and implementation of four units as of right in all of, in all urban serviced areas. So the funding on the whole will be used to fund a combination of staff time, consulting, legal, and advertising fees, grants and investments in affordable housing, housing-related infrastructure, and compute, community-related infrastructure that supports housing. Uh, the electronic agenda for this evening's meeting will be amended to include the report that is currently being considered. But for members of the public listening, the report requests that council consider the following critical path items that we were trying to keep moving while waiting to be able to discuss this project publicly. So that includes the recruitment of a part-time half-coordinator for a period of up to nine months in twenty-twenty-five at an estimated cost of thirty thousand dollars to support and track the implementation of the half-work plan, coordinate and procure external studies, undertake research, support policy and program development, administer CMHC reporting requirements, liaise with the development community, and support engagement activities, among other tasks. It also requests the procurement of consultants to support initial work on hash, half-initiatives, including a detailed land analysis within the urban serviced areas to further increase density permissions as part of the zoning bylaw comprehensive review, training for staff to support expedited processes for non-complex development review, the development of terms of reference for consolidated design guidelines, and studies related to the declaration and sale of surplus land for housing purposes. The total cost of this consultant support is estimated to be two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. These two requests were not reflected in the twenty-twenty-five budget, but would be fully funded through half monies. Uh, and just wanted to note as well that a report detailing the proposed uses of the remaining three million dollars plus of half funding will be included in a staff report for council consideration in the very near future. Uh, and Director Merritt and I are happy to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Are there any questions for clarification from council at this time? Seeing none? The recommend, yes, I'm just going to double check. Do you have the recommendation to put up on the screen? I believe it's the same, but. Deputy Mayor.
I move that the report from the Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation Department dated January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, reuse of approved funding for initial program requirements be received. And two, that council approve the use of funding approved by resolution twenty-twenty-four dash two-six-six to fund the critical path items identified in SR twenty-eight sixty-one, including recruitment of staff and retention of consultants.
So moved. Seconded by Counsel Prodrick. Mover, any comments?
Only, of course, that we look forward to more, more details and we're very excited about the announcement. And my thanks to staff who very quickly pivoted today to try and bring this out and to open, I hope. Uh, and I, I appreciate the explanation for the public's benefit of why that needed to be the case when upper uh, orders of government, um, you know, put embargoes on communication. Um, they sometimes aren't always as, as swift to alleviate our communication concerns way down here. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconder, any comments?
I would just thank staff through, thank you, your worship, through you. Thanks, staff, and uh, it's pretty exciting because I don't think there's been much rental housing built since I was a blonde, and that's a long time ago. So on a sincere note, thank you very much, and I look forward to the end result. And it is, it is great when different levels of government, such as the county and, and the township and the federal government can work together.
Thank you. Other members, any comments? Seeing none? I would just like to thank staff too, reiterating what the deputy said. There was uh, some decision-making prior to the meeting, trying to get this back out into open and be able to deal with it. And for the, for the presentation you provided with an explanation, the best we can do, and that it will be on the agenda when it's reprinted tomorrow. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion has passed. Thank you. We have no committee of the whole this evening, so that brings us to notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion this evening? Seeing none? Direct motion. Do we have any direct motions coming forward this evening? Seeing none? Consent agenda. Consent agenda is comprised of the routine items that are addressed by council, and any item can be extracted at any council member's request to be dealt with individually. Is there an item to be extracted this evening? Counsel Prodrick.
Your worship, I would ask that item fourteen point three be extracted, please.
Team three? Thank you. Counsel Willis.
I would ask that item fourteen point one be extracted.
Okay, fourteen one, fourteen three. That leaves two left on the consent agenda. Any others to be extracted this evening? Seeing none? Could I have a motion for the remaining items? And the recommendation is provided. Here, Counsel Prodrick.
Uh, I would move that all items in the consent agenda dated Jan-, consented date agenda, uh, accepting item fourteen one and fourteen point three be approved as presented and that the necessary action be taken.
So moved. Seconded by Counsel Ennis. Any comments from the mover?
No, sir.
Seconder, other members? Call the question. All in favor? Motion has passed. So we'll go through them in order, fourteen point one. Counsel Willis.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Um, I wanted, uh, the item is actually the annual operating report from the Nielsen Store Museum and Cultural Centre, which is a volunteer group that have been running this museum for many, many years, acting as caretakers for one of our heritage properties. Uh, all done with volunteers, and they do an excellent job. They've created a destination for people who visit Amherst Island and should be very proud of the work they do. And so I'd just like to give uh, our gratitude for their work.
Thank you. Would you mind making a motion? And then we can all have, discuss if we wish.
I would move that the report from the Heritage Culture and Tourism Division dated January twenty-eight, three Nielsen Store Museum and Cultural Centre, twenty-twenty-four, review annual operations be received for information with our thanks.
Thank you. The seconder? Counsel Prodrick? Mover, any additional comments?
No, only that this is a great example of how the township and community uh, organizations can partner to uh, bring things to the communities, and uh, I think it's very positive.
Thank you. Seconder? Other members? I, I agree with Counsel Willis's comments. Um, and it's, it's always an attraction as well. Whenever there's an event on the island, it's, the store is always open. And uh, it, they do have some very interesting items in there. And uh, I've gone through it a couple of times, and it's always, uh, I see something new. So with that, I will call the question. All in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, fourteen point three, let me scroll up. Yeah, so this one is, is an item that has three recommendations. So we can go through each recommendation individually then and uh, be able to uh, deal with each one as they come. But with that, uh, the first recommendation in the report, is there a member that would wish to put that on the floor? Counsel Prodrick.
Um, I would move that uh, the minutes of the January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the uh, WJ Henderson Recreation Centre Renewal Committee, that recommendation one, that the minutes of the meeting of the WJ Henderson Recreation Renewal Centre, renewal, sorry, committee be received.
The three clauses together.
Okay, sorry. Um, that the committee recommended the council adopt the updated terms of reference for the WJ Henderson Recreation Centre Renewal Fundraising Committee, and that the committee recommends that the case statement be finalized and that the council approve the case statement.
So moved. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Budrick? Any comments from the mover?
Um, yes, your worship. Uh, I sit on this committee, just so that's out there in, in the front. Um, yeah, it's been a very robust uh, exchange of ideas from the different members of the committee. Uh, there at Counsel Willis and myself, and you say, Ayo Murphy, but there is a, a fair representation of the uh, populace, the taxpayer. Um, I'm just going to tell a bit of a personal reflection on this, and I'm, I'm referring to the case study in general. And just so that people understand what that recommendation was, um, the committee recommends to council that the WJ Henderson Recreation Centre be renamed the WJ Henderson Community Centre. And uh, I'm uh, dating myself here, but I had a personal uh, fam- family relationship with the, call him Bill. It's uh, Bill Henderson, going way, way back, uh, not in the fifties, but in the late sixties. I knew him through family members, and he was a community builder. Um, you know, different things that people don't know about and things that happened, and donation of land. And he had a vision for uh, Amherst Field, but also Loyalist. And I think he would be very pleased to know that um, the area that he, he designed or gave to the township is being more recognized than just recreation. There's the library, there will be uh, meeting rooms, et cetera, et cetera. And that uh, you know, it, it, it's uh, it's a lasting tribute to him. And I think it's what uh, we in Loyalist should uh, see to, is sort of a community feeling that there's more than hockey and swimming and different things and library. And who knows what the future may, may uh, bring. But I, I truly hope that council will think of it in those terms and that uh, we do rename it uh, as a community centre.
Thank you. That ties in with the last recommendation as well, if recommendation two is, is passed. Um, seconder, any comments? Other members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion has passed. So we have the second recommendation, um, waiving of the procedural bylaw. Would someone like to place that one on the floor? Deputy Mayor.
I move that council waive section eleven point two H, the procedure bylaw to reconsider clause three in resolution twenty-twenty-three thirteen-six, dated June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved. And just for clarification to the public, this is required uh, for us to be able to move forward to address item number three, resolution number three. That's why we're doing them individually in order. And uh, so with that, I would take a seconder. Counsel Budrick? Any comments from the mover? Seconder, other members? Call the question. All in favor? Motion has passed. That allows us to go on to the last recommendation. Is there a member that wishes to put it on the floor? Counsel Prodrick.
I would move that the committee recommends to council that the WJ Henderson Recreation Centre be renamed the WJ Henderson Community Centre.
So moved. Seconded by Counsel Budrick. Mover, any additional comments?
I think I've said enough on the item.
Okay. Seconder, other members? I think you summed it up very well. Counsel Prodrick? I have nothing to add. With that, we'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Okay. That brings us to announcements.
If I may, your worship, uh, speak to one more thing from those minutes of the fundraising committee. Uh, as part of the, the group, uh, the committee also appointed, uh, I just would like to recognize and, and it wasn't here for council to pull out, but I thought it should be mentioned that the committee has recommended that John Armitage be appointed as the campaign chair um, for proceeding with our capital campaign for the WJ Henderson Renewal Project. Uh, John is a longtime community member and community builder as well in his own right. And we're very fortunate uh, to start the, the capital campaign uh, for our project. And uh, just want to recognize that uh, he will be the campaign chair going forward, and we'll be looking for uh, members to assist with that campaign, which we'll start forthwith.
Thank you. And we wish to thank John Armitage as well for stepping up to that position. Um, very well suited, and I think will be very successful. So we're grateful for him taking on this challenge. Any other announcements this evening from council? Deputy Mayor.
Uh, I just want to bring to the public's attention that uh, myself, the, the mayor, uh, Counsel Prodrick and Counsel Budrick, um, all enjoyed a successful Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference uh, in Toronto, where were over two thousand people there, um, the largest uh, attendance ever. Um, I am a member of the board, um, as some may be aware. And uh, Roma continues to uh, augment its, its place and its status in advocating for uh, for rural Ontario and for rural municipalities. Um, one thing to note uh, in that voice is that it continues to be uh, more streamlined and united with other municipal associations throughout the province for many issues and challenges that we face collectively as a sector. Uh, and so I would draw people's attention to AMO's uh, election strategy, uh, which was launched at the Roma Conference. Um, it's quite uh, unique for AMO to, to um, get into the foray, as it were. It is decidedly nonpartisan, of course, um, as it must be for the Association of Municipalities, Ontario. Uh, however, it does outline and make clear uh, what the issues are facing municipalities in the province and why it is important for the electorate to engage with those issues. I will likely have more to say on that during the course of the provincial election that we all uh, anticipate in the near future, but I would like to draw people's attention to that.
Thank you. Any other announcements this evening? Seeing none? I'll just briefly mention that at Roma, uh, council did meet with the Minister of Sport. Had a delegation with them to be able to present the successes we've had in Loyalist Township with our recreation. Um, part of which I drew his attention to were the three rinks that are currently out there, Bath, Amherst Field, and Odessa for the public to enjoy. And noted that uh, it's a hundred percent volunteer, and a lot of work has gone into it. And the local citizens have taken ownership of them and uh, I think provided a very needed and enjoyed um, recreation for the public. Um, we brought We brought for the Minister of Sport, we did bring out a number of different items, but that was one of them. And, uh, we were able to successfully, I believe, uh, pique his interest in, in the events that happened at Loyalist Township. I also did attend two other delegations for committee that I'm, I'm the executive, uh, TAPMO. But that's another topic and, uh, I won't, uh, I'll just mention that it did make for a very, uh, busy conference, attending the conference as well as, uh, bringing issues forward to the ministers. Any other announcements at this time? Seeing none. Confirmatory bylaw. Would someone make a motion for the confirmatory bylaw? Counsel Willis.
I move that bylaw twenty twenty five dash six to confirm the proceedings of council of Loyalist Township be enacted and passed and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign and seal.
So moved. Seconded by Counsel Budrick. All in favor? Motion has passed. And a motion to adjourn. Counsel Budrick? Turn at seven. So moved. Seconded by Counsel Ennis. Call a question. All in favor? Motion has passed. We are.